All right, I call a meeting to order. Meeting of the Power Select Board for Tuesday, September 26, 2023. This meeting is being cablecast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we can all see.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring in an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all what we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. All right. The first item on our agenda, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board this evening? All right. Scene one, we'll move forward into our one and only item on our agenda this evening, which is our presentations of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. These are updates on existing projects and requests presented to the select board by each department. First on our agenda this evening is the fire upgrade. Upgrade 19 fire department computers. Chief? Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Okay, I'll try to look at it as brief as I can. For the second round of our projects, we were looking to upgrade a minimum of 19 fiber line computers. We recently have been informed that starting next year, Microsoft will no longer be supporting computers that operate Windows 10. The vast majority of our fire department desktops that are in a high IT room and our fire dispatch computers are operating Windows 10, and they do not have the ability to be upgraded to Windows 11. We do have computers that can be upgraded to Windows 11 and have them. These do not. I consider a public safety IT room computer that dispatches in our office of desktop computers critical infrastructure. These multiple computers utilized in our public safety IT room, fire dispatch, control our emergency and non-emergency phone lines. They control our fiber ground communication systems, our apparatus GPS systems, and various 911 information and mapping platforms. Again, the computers utilized by our chief offices and officers are not only utilized for administrative tasks, but they're also utilized during emergency incidents. We recently found out this, so this was not put in our fire department tenure capital overlay. If the request is not funded for OPER, we are going to add that to our capital overlay program, but that costs $2.5. But I felt rather than burden the town with that cost and taxpayers, I figured it was more fiscally responsible to run that through the OPER program. If the funds are billed. But I want to be clear, and I said this in our OPER committee meeting, if you're a project submitted with a higher priority, I would certainly understand asking for funding for this project. Again, we're going to have to pay for this one way or the other. I was trying to find a way to pay for it, you know, to not have to go through capital overlay and obviously our taxpayers. But again, if there's projects out there that are in need of funding and you feel more priority, we will go along with that. Okay? Just a few more minutes. I just was going to review quickly the five projects that we had in the first round.
Thank you.
Just so you understand where we are. So the first project we had was the completion of a townwide fiber network that would include Council of Agents, Fire Station 2, and Fire Station 3. There's no fiber network there now. The cost of that was $207,000. The contract to install the fiber line was signed on May 3, 2023. The IT department ordered the upgraded switch that would go, originally was going to go to the school department, on May 4. The fiber lines were ordered by the vendor on May 12, 2023, in an 18-week lead time. We're expecting fiber delivery in late September and installation to begin in October, with completion by December. All our procurement documentation minus the invoices have been submitted to the OPER. So that project is still ongoing. When it happens, it will happen fast, but we're waiting for the materials for that. For everyone to be aware of. The second project we had was the security access control systems and security cameras at Fire Stations 2 and 3. That was a total of $43,754. That project was completed back in August. Each substation now has full access control systems and a live video feedback to our fire dispatch center. All procurement documentation invoices have been submitted to the OPER. So that was just going through the process right now. Number three, IT upgrades to our fire dispatch and stations 2 and 3, which included three display boards and computers to operate them. That project was completed back in June, 2023. The interactive display boards with live video access for remote meetings and training sessions have been installed, along with the laptops and control. All procurement documentation invoices are being submitted to the OPER. So they have all that documentation. The fourth one was the upgraded HVAC system in North Station and adding AC in our South Coast Fire Station, which had no air conditioning. That was about $5,000. I want to thank Davis Iden Talk. He opened up that project. And upgraded HVAC unit was installed at Station 2 back in June, and that project is complete. Two mini splits of HVAC air conditioning unit were installed at Station 3 in August and awaiting the town's electrical contract for the wire. I expect that to be completed in October, and maybe Dave can stand on that. The building department, that Davis department is handling the procurement services on that. And the last item we had, number five, was the public safety radio infrastructure equipment for a new South Coast communication tower. That was kind of for all public safety. That cost was about $70,000. A little quick update on that. That's a new privately owned communication tower. That tower has been erected. You go by past Ocean Spray, you will see it. It's awaiting ever so us to provide power at the site. The emergency communication shelter and generator are being provided by Makepeace at zero cost as part of our agreement. Their delivery, there's no delivery timetable yet. The majority of the communication equipment, part of that $70,000, approximately $14,000 of it, has arrived. It is our vendor's supply house, and we have paid for that. It's ready for installing. The rest of the OPER monies for this project are the higher climbing crew to install and component tower and shelter. But obviously, we can't do that until they're on site. So we're waiting for that. I remain hopeful that this will be within the OPER timetable. I know there's a deadline on OPER. But all procurement documentation and our invoices received have been submitted to the OPER. That's kind of really our final project. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions, Chief?
On this one, were you required to go out and did anything here?
Some things we were required to walk. But everything was, there's a state contract. So pretty much everything was done by state contract or that's done through IT.
So this was an IT state contract?
Pretty easy to do.
Will this impact your maintenance, yearly maintenance budget, or is it?
The computers, no, it's pretty much built into these budgets.
To wash in the sense that?
Yeah.
Give her the old equipment for new stuff?
Pretty creative. Take care of that stuff. I don't see that being a problem. It's just one way or another, we have to procure it. And it will be through state contracts, state pricing. I know my Mr. Meeley now will help us with that a little more. It's pretty true. Kind of a record, but just sort of adding in the direction of the sense. If you're not going to replace the monitors, it's a missed opportunity.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you, Chief. Yeah, a couple of quick housekeeping things that I should have addressed before we started, and I apologize. So first of all, you may have noticed, we only have three members of the board here this evening. A couple of members, unfortunately, were unable to make it. So we'll be asking them to view the YouTube presentation and reach out to anyone that's here tonight with any particular questions that they have. And Mr. Fantasy, if you could just give us a brief overview of where the town is with ARPA spending, what we've spent, what we have left, and what we'll have left if these present, these are all approved.
Okay, so there's two buckets of money that came from federal estate. The first is the Plymouth County ARPA funds, the allocation to the town of ARPA. We were awarded $2,114,308.49. That's from Plymouth County. They oversee that money. So all these projects that they're coming up to present have to be decided whether we're putting it through OPER with Plymouth County or we go to the federal funds that are kind of free and clear that we can use on any project. The goal is to use up the Plymouth County first because anything else can be converted into the other bucket. So we received over $2 million. Funds that we've already received from Plymouth County was $228,681.72. So those are the ones, the projects that were completed, the invoices were done, the project was done, submit the invoices, and then we get funded back. So that's come to $228,000 plus a change. The balance in the Plymouth side is $1,885,626.77. So that's what we're looking at in this round, is to make sure that we use up that $1.8 million first, or better usage. Then there's the other bucket that we have. We have $1,231,634 that came through the federal government, worth its way at the CARPA. So that funds, those funds are undesignated. So instead of being certain things that fit in the Plymouth County ARPA funds to get qualified, anything going this, whatever we want to use it for. So how much has been spent out of that fund? So there's $1.23 million? We spent zero so far. Again, because the goal is to put these through Plymouth County first and see what we have left over. Use these other projects and slide them into the federal. Few other things. There's some things that we went and met with Plymouth County. Some things were not eligible for the four buckets that come out of the Plymouth County funds, OPER funds. One is like water source issues. Things that would help out pandemic in the future and so forth. Some of those are the police safety ballistic protection plan, the speed alert radar signs, the COA, the kitchen portion of the COA upgrades in the kitchen. For instance, the warming center and so forth wouldn't be under that. But the HVAC, any HVAC would easily come under Plymouth County. And then the codification bylaws, which is through the police office. So that's kind of like an update. We still have a total, if you add the two remaining allocations, we have $3,117,260. So 3.1 million, that's still there. If we pass all of these, that would take $2.815 million. So we have a remainder of, I think it's a remainder of about $288,000. So we're in good position because we have most of the proposals already in. If anybody's thinking of anything else, what I'd like to do is keep them on the side in case some of the estimates come up higher than we assumed. Hopefully, they come up below what we assumed.
I would think some are almost guaranteed to come in higher than we.
Yeah, I know, especially as we go through these delays of getting important and so forth. So that's where we stand.
Mr. Sense, the four projects that you said were not eligible for Plymouth County ARPA are the ballistic protection, the speed radar, the COA kitchen equipment, and the codification of bylaws. Are they all eligible for those federal ARPA funds?
Yes, anything is eligible.
So okay, so we can divert those into the federal program?
So that's why, if you heard last week when Tom O'Brien from the county came in and he said, "Oh, you're doing a great job." You have, I forget how much he said.
He said we spent more than what? I was just more than asking you to address that.
More than we had. Well, you know, he was saying that as a compliment to the town of Carver because we're using up that money. And so it almost sounded like we overspent. We didn't overspend, we put the two together. So we're in good shape right now, and there's good projects. I mean, we've been fortunate to spread it around. Sometimes I've done one project and cut everybody else off or something. So we're kind of helping a lot in areas.
I think your point about spending the Plymouth County money first is a good one. We want to save that federal money as much as we can for our own purposes, don't qualify.
Are there questions for Mr. Fantasy before we go on? No? Okay. Next on our presentations this evening, I think we have a number of EMS proposals. Chief, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
The first one we have on our list are the Lucas 3 chest compressions.
Yes. So currently, we do have Lucas chest compression devices on the ambulances. They're older, they're coming to the end of life. These chest compression devices are mechanical CPR devices. Through data that we receive from the vendor, this is something that has been approved in the past because it limits the amount of staff that are required to be in the back of their closed, enclosed ambulance. It also reduces the amount of people how close they need to get to the patient that could be infected with a virus, any virus, whether it be COVID or anything else. So it's definitely a safety measure to reduce the exposure. So what we're looking for is to purchase two, one pre-ambulance to replace the ones we have now. It is on, it was scheduled in our capital budget at Point 26, but we're pretty sure we have the OPER money available, that we did move it up. That way, that saves that capital expenditure at Point 26. We won't have to worry about spending that at that time. And as you know, anything that we can spend in EMS department to offer is money that can stay in the ambulance fund for other things that we may need in the EMS department.
Any questions on that? All right, the next item is the video laryngoscopy system?
Yeah, the video laryngoscopy system, CARES Act was around. We got two of these setups. They're a little bit less expensive, but you kind of get your pay for it. We thought that they weren't really the best tools that we could get. And what it is used for is normally when we have to do an advanced airway and put a breathing tube in the patient, we have to manually put a device in their mouth, and then we have to look into their mouth within six to eight inches of their face. To the point where during the beginning of COVID, they actually made regulations that we were not supposed to do advanced airways because the high risk of exposure for that patient. With these cameras, we're allowed to put the camera in and we're allowed to stand back. So we can be anywhere from 18 inches, 24 inches away, and we're not right in the patient's face. So the chances of the exposure is reduced to go further back. And it's also, the device works very good for patients with difficult airways that are hard to see manually. So we made the decision to purchase these, we already have them. They're already purchased, already on the ambulances. Staff is already trained on them. But it is something that, where it was covered by CARES Act. In fact, we get our own funds, which could cover it and be good in the end for us. Not a lot of money, so it wouldn't have been a capital expense anyways. It would have been something that was covered in operating expense because of the total loss of 10,000.
Questions for the board? Next, the public safety ballistic protection. And this is one of those items that, Mr. Fantasy, you mentioned was not eligible for Plymouth County ARPA, so we'll be using federal money for that?
Yeah. So the ballistic protection is active shooter kits. Maybe 50 of them are precious to be distributed between the police department, fire department, and EMS department. Comes with a full crew vest with level four protections and a ballistic helmet. This is something that, in the current standard for active shooter or hostile events, when going into these situations, public safety is supposed to add this on. The level four of those protections, the vests, is more than what standard vest is that officers wear while on duty. And we both know, and we know that firefighters and EMTs and paramedics know they operate in a squad there, and of course, they're doing their duties. So these would be left for EMS, we'd leave left in the station or left in the ambulances. And in these type of situations, they're here to bat. You can grab them and go, they're one size fits all. They have a front, a back plate carrier, and again, the helmet. This is something for those type of situations. Because although for the fire and EMS side of it, we're not going to be going towards the shooter, but we're going to be in the building where the shooter is, which is the hot zone with the warm zone. And this is a big safety concern that they have in this type of situation. We brought this forward because in the UBS round that there's a lot of other communities in the area that already have these systems in place, and we're willing to use that. So we definitely want to make sure we get the necessary protective equipment. Because if we have a situation like this, it's going to be very difficult to ask our staff to go the hardest way without this protection.
Absolutely, I think that's a priority. Mr. Fantasy, how many of these could we?
There's 50 total.
50 total?
Yes.
Is that enough?
Yeah, from our count, that should be enough.
Okay, any questions on that? All right.
So the fire department has 85 people in it?
Yeah, but not all, not, you wouldn't be putting all 85 into a building. So that's why it's really limited to those who are going to be going into the building. So we figured you're going to need mostly for the officers, good enough for the firefighters, good enough for the paramedics, the EMTs, for while they're in there during the time that the incident's ongoing.
Yeah, my only, I guess, question here is we're spending $55,000 on 50. So if we needed more, they're not an overly expensive item. Mr. Fantasy didn't say that we have some extra OPER money.
The maintenance, there's a maintenance cost to them as well, built in because we have to replace the plates every evening, every week.
You mean, say five years?
Five years, so five years of use. But that's something that we consider when we're ordering this many, we're going to have to maintain that many as well on our own after this is done.
Well, I would just, for myself, this would certainly be a priority to just, if 50 is the number, 50 is the number, but just whatever we need there. Next is the, I'm sorry, are there any other questions on that? Next is the community emergency medical services response units, response units.
So back in 2020, Duke CARES Act, we purchased a response unit for the purpose of assisting with community EMS in the town. At the time, because we weren't certain whether or not we can get approved what we used vehicle. And that used vehicle was famous on my agent, famous on wear and care. This vehicle would be meant to replace that and allow our staff to use it for responding to calls for, you know, vulnerable calls for wellbeing checks, also assisting with the council and agent. Currently, we do, we should do blood pressure every Tuesday. It helps us now that the blood pressure is the first Tuesday of each month. We do blood glucose and blood cholesterol screening, so this vehicle would be used for that. We do wellbeing checks, we do fall prevention as well. So if you go over and follow it, if a patient had multiple falls, one of our crew members would go back after the person's either home or later in that day and check on them and help him with an evaluation of the fall or safety. The other thing that the vehicle was used for during the pandemic was going on calls for COVID positive patients because it carried extra PTE for staff and cleaning equipment to help with cleaning the ambulance. So when the patient was loaded in the ambulance, if the stair chair was used, we had the equipment there to decol, the stair chair, for that. So everything was cleaned before they got to the hospital. And now they have to worry about was cleaning the back area with the patient on us. And it was also used to transport vaccines and also do mobile vaccinations. So we used the vehicle for going to people's houses who couldn't leave their home to give them vaccinations in their homes. But it was also used to pick up vaccinations and equipment to set up. We ran a couple of vaccination clinics during that time.
Had a lot of use.
Yes, yeah, so it definitely has a lot of use. And it's still, we still use it for certain things. And we've gone through that with a pandemic, we're going to have a lot of use for the COVID vaccinations and things, and the same thing with the BP stuff. There's still medical equipment kept on it. It is response to help out on medical calls. Sometimes both the ambulances are tied up, that there are vehicles that can be used to help mutually, the animal shows up. So it definitely has a very beneficial plan. So it is something that's on the capital budget to be replaced in the future. So this is again something else that we take off that in the future. So it's, and also by buying something brand new, it also will save, it will last long. For our department, it'll last us good enough time. We don't throw all that much mileage on the vehicle, so it should last us more than 10 years.
Other questions for the chief on that? Chief, you got a few items that we approved in round one.
Yep.
Could you give us upgrade updates on where those stand?
Definitely. So we submitted through three proposals during the first round of OPER. First was the replacement of the two cardiac monitors, which they were brought in service back in September 1st. Both monitors now on the ambulances and are in order. Those, as we saw from last week, the county actually had to check the reimbursements for that. That's another one that, you know, we heard that from the manufacturer, hey, ARPA funds, they bring monitors, so made it easier to fix that one. We also went with installation of enhanced security system at the EMS station. That was included, security cameras, mostly on the outside of the station. There's some cameras inside the garage with the ambulance department so that we can hide the vehicles. And also, there's a couple of cameras in the administrative side of the station to see the offices and stuff where confidential paperwork and things that are kept. And then the other adding was swipe access, which you bought key access to get into the building. Because right now, we do combination lock, and so when people leave, it's kind of changed a lot every since months. But this would be a lot more secure. It has been completely installed. Everything's almost ready to go. We're waiting on the VOS. D.C., we got operations which work very hard with the vendor, they get them taken care of. And we're just waiting for their cameras or platform basis. So just waiting to get back, get into the VOS system so we can use those. They're almost completely, they expect them to have them completed by next month once the VOS come in. And the other, last thing we did was, a couple of years ago, we added AC to the new section of the station. And then, but we found that the original section of the station with the ambulances and garages and the administrative offices where the HVAC is too old to add air conditioning to, so with this, we replaced that. And we have a new heating furnace system and also air conditioning. The only that's waiting to be done is wait for the town's department, the electrician to come in and power the air conditioning unit, but the heat one, which is good. So that works, and again, that project is almost completely done. We're still, we're expecting by the end of October to have all of our round one projects completed.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the chief? Thank you very much, Chief, we appreciate it. Right, our next presentations are from the North Harbor Water District. Mr. Palmary?
We have two items tonight, but I believe one of them has already been taken care of. One of them was the payment to Middleborough of the previous water bill.
That's okay.
So that's already been taken care of at a previous meeting. So the only item we have is just the connection meter, meter pitch?
Yes, so this connection will provide a speedier, more better connection to Middleborough, be able to measure water usage from Middleborough to Carver. This will also provide leak detection, which is key. So one of the things we dealt with in coming up with the cost for Middleborough was an accurate accounting of the bill. And right now, we don't have that, the customer meter pitch. And dealing with Middleborough, I believe, if we don't do this, it will be difficult to have a pump in the future.
And I was probably going to add, this really is a priority because it's a priority.
And I was probably going to add, this really is a priority because it's a priority not only for our, for the North Harbor Water District, but also for the town of Middleborough. It's important to, they want something up there that can actually measure that water so they can, they can build us what we actually, actually use. And that hopefully will avoid what happened last time with the water bill where there was, the numbers were all over the place and we finally had to, had to negotiate with that. So I don't know, Mr. Penn, see if you have anything you want to add on this one particular item. I know it's been a tough item to nail down an actual cost on, but it's tough to know exactly what it's going to cost until we go to build the pit.
Yeah, until it's bid out, actually.
Yeah.
You know, the estimate was around 200, 225,000. Might be over 300, so that's kind of the ballpark that we're looking at right now. And again, it's critically important to have for any future outages or issues with the, with our water service and those kind of.
So going forward with a number that's uncertain, how, how do we, how do we act on that? Can we, can we approve engineering services to get them out there and so they can actually biz the project and then come back to us for the number?
We can do that. We'll probably come out, I don't know if the engineering service, if it's compiled together as one project, the engineering service would be part of it.
Okay.
Might not be, might have to go over to the federal just for the engineering services because it doesn't mean it's going to be built. So doing it all at once would mean that, you know, they have a more, a better chance of getting that, that guarantee of the county money.
Well, my, I guess my, my question is, and maybe I'm not being entirely clear, at some point when we vote on these items, we're going to have to assign a monetary value to this.
We still don't have a firm number for Middleborough for the engineering services. We're talking Mike Combs a couple times and he's putting that together. So we're not voting today.
Right, but we will be voting.
Hopefully we'll have it on the vote table.
Yeah, because I think probably at that next select board meeting, we could be voting on these. So if we have, right now we have 225,000 down here as a figure. Do you think that figure is?
Well, engineering services?
Right now, that's what we have down for the, the whole thing. We're going to have to come up with a, an accurate of, a figure as we can.
If I may, back 15 months ago now, the, the cost they were talking about was about $85,000 and it's gone up and up and up. They had to move it, just a lot of issues that are out of our control. So every time we revisit, the cost of this is going up. And it's never going to get cheaper.
No, and it's clearly something we have to get out of. Okay.
So, Mr. Penn, you said Middleborough's got in the engineering costs?
Yes, it's on their property. They're doing the whole bidding out for the project. We will operate for that.
Any other questions? Mr. Palmary? Michael, anything else? Um, first round, I don't know, do you have anything on the first round?
No, the only thing we borrowed from Marla.
That, that's right. Thank you very much, appreciate your time. All right, next we have a couple of items from the police department, the police records management system. Chief, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Captain.
Thanks for making this room available to us.
Sure, thank you. Glad we get there every day with you. Nice change of scenery.
Yes, so the first item we have is the police records management system.
So right, so we've talked about this, the number up there is 111,000 added to the additional 246 was approved in the first round. We have not moved forward that much yet. That first 246 is put on an error. Focus, monkey pages, the number wasn't correct. So what do we think about why we need to replace the system? We've had, we purchased a system called IMC back in 2005 on Chief Parker. It's a record management system. That means if our computerated dispatch uses it to put in calls and create a log and our offices use the system to enter police reports and arrest reports. Basically, it's how we maintain all records in the police department. Moved away from, moved away from paper, moved a lot away from paper. A lot of things have been electronically done now. In the near future, in the future, it will be electronic tickets and electronic summoners to court. Everything's based on that. We purchased that system in 2005. It's worked very well for a number of years, but it is approaching end of life. And while it won't use an exact date, estimating between the next three to five years, IMC will be at the end of the, the end, no, it will still operate probably for a year or two, but it won't have the updates. And currently they're not putting a lot of effort into it. So we need to stop looking at another system. This is not unique to Carver, having any response. We discussed this last week at the chief's training oven. Though, and many departments are looking at different options. There are other options out there. There are other systems that are out there. However, we made a switch to IMC in 2005 from a company called Panet. IMC took the data from Panet, diverted it to Oddata, but that did not take to, to date off. There's a bunch of data that sits in there that is virtually useless for private, we have to buy. So one of the concerns that I have in moving to a different brand's management system is that same diversion from one company to another. So we've started by looking at the company we currently use, which points to IMC, which we're phasing it out, and what is their replacement? Their replacement for this system that we've looked at and were asking for the money for. And I believe that that would give us the best chance of data conversions since it's within the same company that they designed this new system to be compatible with IMC, we hope. Say we hope, because you never know until we actually do it. But it's, it's a lot of money moving forward, but it is something we need. It's not, whether we do it with this part of money that we have here or the other part of money for a future catalyst, that's the town who's going to spend the money at some point to replace this system because like every system, computers that Chief Weston mentioned, laptops that were requested, all computers, all technology ages, ages rapidly as this happens. Is this half be done today? No, but it's going to be a project that's going to be on the table within the next five years, probably soon.
So, so the total, the total for this project is 357,185?
Yes.
And is the run going, once we have this installed, is there an annual maintenance contract or something like that we're going to have to?
So when we purchased IMC back in 2005, it was, we spent about $250,000, but they divided that over 10 years, so we paid $25,000 a year. Once that was over, we started paying annual maintenance fee. The first year was a little $11,000 and every year it's increased to this year it was about 18,500. And it increases by about $1,000, $1,500 per year depending on what they do for upgrades. So that's what we're paying right now. This new system is considerably more. What we have right now, the 357 buys the system, all right, but that 10 year period, like we talked about the 250 on IMC, but the annual cost is about doubled to about 40, 41,000 annual cost. Again, as I mentioned, speaking with other police chiefs at the meeting last week, that's what most places are seeing, that these, I'm not a technology person, so I can't tell you, but they're going to these web-based services, they sell you just, so I can't tell you that we can find it cheaper because I don't really want it. But yes, it is a cost that we have to pay a lot of those who are moving forward in the operation of those.
Question for the chief? Go, Chief.
Sure. So it's the same company that has IMC right now that are going to offer this new software?
Yes.
So one of the things that's a little interesting is that they want to charge you a conversion fee, which is very hefty. So IMC gave a conversion, $21,450. They had it twice listed and then $29,250. I don't know why it's doubled listed in there for conversion. It says conversion advanced twice for, is that almost $50,000, over $50,000 to convert the data?
Yeah, it's very expensive.
It's crazy. To convert the data, now it's their own data.
No, I know. And that's just from a company going from, a company that owns IMC to be a new product, not going outside, so Mark 43 and other companies is going to be there. But for, for what I'm hearing and what we're talking about up there, that version part is the biggest piece that all parts are seeing is a big expense.
I guess, I guess a good question in the company is why? Are they their own stock? Is their own stock? Seems like we should ask a couple of questions.
Well, we had, we did have them in and that's what they said, but.
No, I know, but did we have any IT guys talk to them or if that guy's?
Well, we had Blake Shaw, who's our IT guy, talk to him and he's pretty adept at it. I can't tell you what, why, what the value of that is, but that's the biggest part that we have to do. And the biggest part that we have to do is protect the 20 years of data we currently have. Because when it's all said and done, if we lose 20, 20 years of the data like we did before, that doesn't blow up, especially for any cases that might be open and you need to get into the information progress.
And do you have, did you look at any, you said you didn't really look at any comparable system?
Well.
Because you were hoping to get some kind of savings if you stuck with the same company or an easier transition?
Well, I, I can't say I was looking for saves, I'm looking for, I, I, we need the data, that's, you know, our costs again, but we have looked at other companies and they're like, and it's Mark 43, they're not up to speed yet in Massachusetts. So their, their system doesn't have the necessary forms that we need, so it doesn't work. There's a system that I, and the name is weird, it escapes me at the moment, that The Rock is going to. We looked at that and I just don't find that as, as compatible as we're currently dealing. But we have looked at other ones and I think the biggest problem that I have moving to all those is will that, when that data, what have we spent on converting data? Nobody's going to guarantee that. I think the best hope we have of that is going within the same country. The, the conversion requires, I imagine requires somebody to sit down, like it did before, they had to look at every record, move it to fields, and I don't know how they do that now. They did.
Yeah, I think it'd be a lot easier than this.
We hope so, but again, you know, they're making a lot of money off a piece of software.
Yeah, I know, I'd like to ask them a few questions, but usually you can export the data into a format and then import it right back in, which would be pretty straightforward.
Didn't happen very well in 2005.
Yeah, yeah, when you went from Panet to IMC.
And that's my, my concern moving forward is going from one company to another because one didn't, my, my assortment there is one didn't pass.
I think you want to rep the company in Massachusetts, probably one of the top ones that operate in Massachusetts. So there's a good reason to go with somebody. Sometimes you feel like, you know, the price is pretty high.
Well, I agree that it's all license fees. If you look at it, most of it's software license fees, conversion fees, a little bit of hardware, and then you have the maintenance part, which is pretty high too. Now the, the part of the market is to supply, supply the part with the servers and they replace the servers anytime, obviously. Like we asked the question before, if a server goes bad, they need less hours than to replace it and that's covered in that cost.
And is there, so what the information that's here about questionable for the opera funds had to do with maybe eligible if the main purposes for mode access of records from cars, do you not have that today?
We do have that today, but we don't have it. It's not as robust as what they're offering now.
All right, so they're saying that it won't, it may not be eligible if it's just replacing the older system, that's what the question is.
Yeah, I know, that's, we were asked to put things forward to see what we can get out of this and we're trying, and I'm not saying that others don't approve this enough. We were asked for projects to look forward and add something. I think this will definitely give us a more robust ability to do things in the field, which is important. So the laptops are asking for, but again, I don't, I don't approve it.
Is there any field advantage that you can list on the application that might be what you don't get today? More records you can access?
Well, no, I don't know, I would say more, but what happens today is the connection from the fields to the, to here is a connection over a cell phone, basic cell phone connection. And everything's the same place on the laptop. So when something happens, lose that connection, we kind of says, lose the board stuff, get, not get transferred from the laptop to here. So a lot of people are hesitant to use this system. This car, the newest system, doesn't work through, it works the laptop, but it's connected to the server automatically. So you're, everything's being saved on the server, not at the laptop locally in the cruiser, so you don't lose that as much. So hopefully we can get past this idea that if you work in a car, because we've had it, we're able to work car, go ahead and send, it doesn't blow anything stuff. So, so that's, puts people in fear, but a lot of us, it's time to go, it's working and then on it. This new system is much more robust and does not, it's not saving to the laptop, saving to the server on things. I think that it's a better connection. It won't, will allow us to access more. No, we still can have the same access to records throughout plates, around Mars belongs. One of the things we did during COVID, during the pandemic was everybody has a car, nobody had to come to the station at all. We're remotely out of the car. But again, it's not as reliable, the current one's not as reliable. This might be a future, important factor that I can tell you from data, it was also working, it was a type of a quote up and have a loss, it's not, you know.
And there was no way to get it back, you're saying?
No, because it's, you'd have to delete it off that computer and move it along. It was, it was not, it's not a very good system as far as that goes. The one should be.
Anything else?
I just wanted to know, so are your servers being saved to a cloud-based system as well?
So our covered service? Well, we, we are, our service back up here and then they back up to.
Where am I?
Offsite. Yeah, offsite, that'd be the school. We, we all use the cloud for that right now.
But it is offsite.
It is offsite.
And this system you have now is 18 years old?
Yes, 2005 is when we put it in. So it's not, again, like I said, they're telling us under like 25 years. But that's true.
But it will be covered under federal, huh? That's understandable.
And this, again, it's a decision we have to make if they're up. Mirror what Chief Weston said, that there's other things that are more important, we certainly can delay. It's, it's just something that is our 10-year gap, but at some point, whether by this system or another, or we can't kick it out a little bit, it's just my expense.
I think we have the argumentation piece there.
What use of that number? Maybe anything else on this particular item? We have the, the two to speed alarm radar passive signs.
So again, we put those in to see what we use our money for. One of the, what they complained in town, obviously, is speeding vehicles. And we have one, currently have one sign. This, we added two more to it, would be, give us two more portable signs around town to address speed complaints. It doesn't really speak to any pandemic needs. Getting us, if we do something remotely, we'll have an officer sit out there and read it out, but we thought we would put it forward to see if we could try to use that one as best we could. It's definitely, definitely in the, in the town, but it's, it's in our.
Yeah, it's the federal, we're not going to listen to.
Self-explanatory, any questions from the chief on that? And chief, we have one item farther down in our list that I'm not sure how it gets separated, but we may as well talk about it by here, police laptop computers for police crews.
Yes, so again, the reason we put those in for operators is again, that they have the ability that offices work alone during the pandemic. We, we were very, very successful keeping COVID out of the station. We had, we had lost three, four people at the same time to COVID, we would have been devastated. So we had, each had their rock, their cruisers coming, coming from home to cruiser, signing on the radio and have a computer in the cruiser. It made it very easy for us keeping a social distance, keep, keep the pandemic out of the station. I think replacing these computers are computers that need to be replaced. We can get them over very many of these. It certainly makes sense to me that it's a way to keep offices outside of the station, keep distance in a pandemic. And we use that sort of inside and we have several, as Chief Weston mentioned about his, we have several with a recent of life.
Chief, I think the only thing you had on round one was the records management system. And we just talked about that. So I guess there's, unless you have anything else for us, or there's questions on the board?
So if that was on round one, what happened? Did it drop out of?
No, round one, it did the wrong number, we're going to place the 246. I think the 246 was approved around. An understanding that wasn't pulled.
Is everybody good? All right, thank you, chief, appreciate it. All right, next on our list this evening is the school part. I may need to grab another chair.
I need to grab a third chair.
All right.
It doesn't know if we get invited.
Thanks for joining us this evening. So we have, we have a project, Karma Middle School, 12 schools placed.
Yeah.
So all the interior classrooms in the middle high school, previously when the buildings we were built had air conditioning, that air conditioning is no longer working in most of those rooms. Their interior rooms, they have their windows, so they definitely, so they get hot, I think it's hot in those rooms, but it's warmer time. And so obviously this year, the native school, it was a tough first couple of weeks because it was very warm. So we're looking to put in those many split units into as many classrooms as we can. So the number here, 180,000, is based on an estimate of $15,000 per room, you know, let's do 12 units. Obviously that will allow us to do all 20 classrooms. There are a couple classrooms that are still working, you know, A. We do have it in our, actually in our capital plan to eventually do all 20 interior classrooms. And I had to ask Dave about it, because Dave's going to speak more about the system than he or Ron or I are going to be able to, if you answered some questions about how the system operates. So we have to go get a quote on this because we could, but each individual room, the system's a little different. So, you know, ultimately, we're acknowledging that we're not going to be able to do every interior classroom with this request, but it's a sound, sound estimate, yes, but we would be able to do it, we would live within the $180,000 that's incorporated to us. I mean, I love to watch people, the system at all.
Yes, what we'd be doing, the mechanical system at the high school is 36 years old, you know, in 1987. Six years ago, through MSBA accelerated repair program, we replaced everything in the wood room. I'm going to three high-efficiency gas boilers, variable sweet pumps, everything, they'll do everything inside, but nothing outside. At this point in the school, looking at the longevity and everything, the, what we're doing here is just adding double split air conditioning only units. Because being a public space, requiring an outside air per ASH rate regulations, to replace the, because these are rolled out 22, the existing systems. You can no longer, you can buy dry condensing units, but it was kind of a bad design, you know, with the way we integrate them. So really does not make any sense at all to retrofit, most of the roof part units are failed with lenses. So what we're doing, those would still be in use, those would provide a ventilation in the spaces, and those would provide our heat, but these AC only split systems would provide the air conditioning comfort, which is probably to humidify and control the temperature in the warm weather. And what we'd be doing is looking at, as Scott said, we'll look at it, because we can get multiple indoor blow units evaporators per condenser. So we'd be looking at retrofitting where there was existing air conditioning units, utilizing pitch brackets, electrical feeds. That'll really help keep our costs down, so we're just looking to do as many as we can.
And do all those cost-saving ideas, they're all incorporated in that $180,000 number?
Yes.
Yeah. Any questions from the board?
Do you think the existing units have a life, much longer life, do you think they can fail in the next several years?
The unit events?
Yes. The president's providing there now.
So the unit events, that building is pneumatic controlled, you know, in the C system. Pneumatics are relatively horrible to work on, they're high payments, but if, you can always get parts. Even today, being at a age, there's still parts available, it's not like we're going to have a electronic failure. So the control unit is manageable, rarely we have, then you have two indoor coils, you have a hot water coil and the exhaust coil. We're abandoning the exhaust coil, hot water coils are boiled, we can repair if anything happens and blah blah. So I'm thinking for the longevity of the building, I think if we were to get into a major renovation of HVAC unit events, DESI doesn't even support unit events anymore because they'll be de-leveling classrooms. So I don't know what you would be looking at at that point, what their solution would be.
Price.
Probably, probably be a little, it'd probably be a building.
A building.
Which is what we're trying to.
Imagine bringing us over the thresholds, you talked about bringing over the thresholds of requirements, like operating.
Yeah, so if you achieve 35% value of a building's assessed, 35% of a building's assessed value, everything needs to be upgraded in that building to come and go, building is not scalable.
And we did use the previous qualified to go through all those units, so each of the first two years of COVID, we had the company come in, the chemical company come in, they went through every single unit and replaced the parts as necessary. So that's happened for two consecutive years. So the units, we said right now, are pretty solid.
They're a mechanical unit, but they're in fairly good shape, fairly good shape.
Are you looking at doing 12 units here?
I'm thinking we can probably do 12.
When there's a reason why we're going to present it more, or?
We're just looking at the money that's available.
Yeah, we're going to just be inclined to say that once available.
If there's more money available, we could start maybe.
I guess that's a question, I'm not sure of the limits.
Yeah, I mean, Scott, did you say there were 20 total classrooms? 20 interior classrooms. So to do them all, we'd probably, I was close to double.
And I think, I think the thinking was when we progressed all these items, is that, I think Mr. Fantasy touched on it earlier. The chances are some of these things may go up in price, so I think we're trying to be cognizant of leaving a little bit of buffer in there just in case some of these things go up. It may run very well, we'll get to the end of Opera and find out if we have some money left over, if we can come back and do some of these things. But I think that was, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fantasy, but I think that was part, we're trying to leave, you know, not spend down to the last penny because chances are something, something might have changed. But this certainly would be something that I think, if there was some money left over, might be worth addressing.
If something didn't get accepted for some reason, then how would that impact us in terms of submitting in for, or we just not have the capacity to add another project if something, if they rejected one of them, do we lose out of the money or?
Well, I think we could always add another project.
Yeah.
Or increase the.
And if it's rejected from Plymouth, it'll shift over, because this money is stolen in the federal.
Correct. This board, obviously, I mean, we're in a future meeting, probably our next meeting, but could change. If we chose to not approve something, or that money would be available for something else, so we can increase something up there.
Any other questions? Then Scott, if you could give us, I think you had the largest.
The color project.
Yes.
Not, probably give us something to really stand on, the building project, for a second.
We're moving along, Ron.
Yeah, yeah, we're moving along, we actually just got our sub bids in, which is excellent. We did a first round of sub bids, we had one of our sub bids coming much higher than anticipated. So we went back to the drawing board with our designers, and look, let's get creative here, did some value engineering, we redid it out, and came right back down, which we're really excited about, so we do have, so the bid is great, we've got our general contracted bids coming tomorrow. So we'll have a better sense of what our final number will be, once we open up the GC bids, we will all go together and see where we stand. But so far, so good, our designers have been excellent to work with, and really creative, and patient with us in terms of answering all of our questions and trying to, you know, do this renovation of a building from, from Kansas.
And so I hope that after we open the contract bids, that we'll enter a contact with someone soon. Have a part of the beginning.
So based on what you're hearing, we approved just short of $791,000 for this project, do you think that number is still, still there? Think that's the right number, or do you think that you're going to be looking for an increase in that?
I think I'd be more, I'd give you a more intelligent answer after Wednesday, when you get the GC numbers in.
Okay, once you get that numbers, do you have an anticipated completion? Idea?
We don't have a date for that yet, though we expect it to be sometime, it can be January or early February.
Okay, could you, could you let Mr. Fantasy know once you open the bid, so he can update us on that at the future meeting?
He's the man who sends the contracts.
There, any questions, any other questions for school to ask anything?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any more questions?
Right, so, next is the council on aging, we have, various kitchen employees.
Yes.
Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you for considering our proposal. One of the questions I actually have very from the start is, you were mentioning that perhaps this doesn't qualify for the project. I was just wondering, coming at it from the angle of the future pandemic concerns, or how we were addressing the pandemic when we went through it, with regard to food service, because that became a critical aspect of service for the community, particularly the senior population, and that having improved equipment would certainly put us in a better place should we be facing another pandemic. So coming at it from that angle, I didn't know if it's worth putting it through.
Well, it's going to go through anyway, if I may.
Right, right, I just didn't know whether it was helpful to maybe submit it with that angle for the Plymouth, even if it can go with the other.
So let me just say, when I mentioned the ones that weren't qualified, basically, that was an opinion prior to getting to the full committee. So, and it comes down to, a lot of it comes down to how these are formulated, the language that's used. Like, for instance, using the word ventilation, 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 gets it past the, it's just air conditioning. So there has to be certain things that we're learning, that will get these through, so they're all going to be put through one at first.
Oh, they will anyway.
Yeah, and then they'll, they'll.
Yeah, I just didn't know, I was pushing for that angle because, yeah.
See what it is.
Because it was definitely a factor where home delivered meals doubled during COVID, so the food service.
Well, for instance, they approved the freezers and refrigerators for service.
And capacity increases and so forth. So I just wanted to know if that was a possibility to go.
I don't believe, when we discussed things during the pandemic, the meal to meals program, I mean, exploded now.
It did, it did, and it never stopped, food service was ongoing throughout the pandemic, so that need is there. And reliable, and I think that's probably the key word here, is we're working with equipment that's, I don't even know the age of it, I don't know if you know the age of the equipment, but we've already dealt with, you know, repair services that are increasing, you know, inconsistency, inconsistencies with some of the functioning of the current equipment, that replacement would really give us a lot more security with the reliability and the safety of the food service overall. And I think that's where we're going with this, and it just also, with just the greater growth that we're seeing with just the food service we have currently. We're doing half or around 1,000 meals a month, and August was up to 1,200. So I'm already seeing that, you know, the capacity growth that we're just getting from the model basis.
How many of the pandemic, do you recall how many meals or wheels, or deals you delivered then?
I wanted to say around 30 or so per day, and I know it was over double during the pandemic.
Other questions for?
I didn't know there were any questions with equipment that I could use here.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, it's clearly needed.
And I think built into that, you had some of the installation or some other aspects in it too, so this figure should cover that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's see, next is our, our voice, voice telecommunications compliance upgrades. Who is the dealer? Tom? Mr. Neely, thanks for coming in this morning, this evening?
Thank you.
Oh, I did.
I can only speak to the town side of it.
Okay.
So the majority of that cost was, was for the school, and it's my understanding that the school has completed that part. As far as for the town hall and the rest, I am waiting for a new quote, because the old, this was an old quote, and I don't have any updated numbers as of yet.
Okay, so I think that the number down here, it looks like we received $49,806,000, $49,806.85. So we were looking for an additional $7,700 and change, do you think that number is accurate?
I have the original quote that came in was $7,735.55.
So you don't think that number is accurate?
I don't think that number is accurate.
Do you have any idea when you have an upgraded updated number?
Open to have it in the next few days.
Oh, great, so that was about the time we voted, we said we would have an updated number, okay. Can you explain to us exactly what this, this would do?
So this is to, so when somebody in the town hall dials 911, it's going to tell the 911 panels exactly who made the call and where it's coming from. So if Mr. Fantasy dials from his office, dials 911, it's going to show up, and, you know, 911's going to know that it was his office that called.
So right now, that, that doesn't happen?
That does not happen.
Can he also do 911 correct, or do they have to get a number before they hit 911 to get an outside line?
911, yeah.
Is it, is it not only the 911 and then 911?
Yeah, so that's, that's going away, they won't have to do that.
That's already gone away.
It's already gone away.
The 9 and 911 is Carrie's law, and that's in effect today.
And as I understand it, our phone contract is up for the town hall as well, right, so possibly when we look at that, that would be something that have to.
That is also something I'm going down the path to, to look at, to see what, what can be done to extend that phone contract maybe for the different.
Any questions, Mr. Neely on this particular project? And then, Mr. Neely, can you upgrade us, update us with town hall technology with that whole?
That is going to start weekend, in the October 6th.
Fantastic.
They're going to start, they're going to start to put that in, and hopefully it will be completed within a couple of weeks.
While that project is going on, do you think the meetings in that room are going to have to relocate, or will we be able to continue meeting?
I think we'll be able to continue meeting. It's my goal to be able to continue to use both those rooms, both meeting room one and four from that the operation.
Alright, so not a long time, once it, when work starts, move along pretty quick?
Yeah, it should, it should move along pretty quick, but, you know, existing, there's already existing TVs there, or monitors, I should say, that are going to be replaced, but, you know, we can still utilize the old system with the new, with the new monitors, and then as, as the equipment gets installed, it'll stop making, make disruption.
Thank, any questions for Mr. Neely? Alright, thank you very much, appreciate you coming in this evening. Let's see, I think the very last item on our agenda is the upgrade to the Emergency Operations Center. Chief, thanks for coming in this evening. This is an item that we talked about on round one of our Opera projects, and I think at that time, the board was very much in favor, but we didn't have a final number, so we couldn't really take any kind of votes on it, so we're back, we're back again.
So, to just recap some of the history that I told you about last time. The current EOC was established when the town hall was renovated and expanded back in 1997. It was furnished and equipped through funding provided by the Energy Corporation, which was the owner of the nuclear power station. And throughout the 22 years between 1997 and 2019, when decommissioning of the nuclear power plant began, efforts to have the technology and communication equipment updated in order to keep pace with 21st century technology and communications capabilities were not successful since they required approval of funds from the Energy Corporation, and they elected not to approve. So this leaves the town with an excellent site for the EOC, and an excellent location in the basement of the town hall, but lacking normal modern technology and appropriate furnishings. So as we all know, in 2019, 2020, we had a pandemic which resulted. In March of 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed. Division of the laws, law, is, which has resulted in money being given to both businesses as well as government organizations. Call for emergency services to be assisted with the burden of the pandemic, and to use these funds to be better prepared for future emergencies. Our Emergency Operations Center is the location where the Emergency Management Department brings together the department heads of our emergency services and town leadership to plan and prepare, coordinate the response for and recover from major disasters. The current facility has no IT capabilities, extremely limited ability to monitor disaster events town or statewide, and very limited communication capabilities. So prompted by the desire to correct these deficiencies and the opportunity provided by Opera Funds, and after urging the town leadership, I formed a small committee of Fire Chief Craig Weston, Deputy Fire Chief Eric Jermaine, and myself, to review this project and determine what upgrades were necessary. We then contacted the appropriate vendors, met with them, and acquired the project quotes, which were submitted to the town administrator on May 1st, which totaled $210,463.87. I also provided additional application information and documentation to Kim Walter, the finance department in July. I believe that the use of Opera Funds to modernize and bring the Town Emergency Operations Center into the 21st century from a technology and communication capability point of view, is not only a very appropriate use of these funds, but it's very much in the heart and spirit of the type of project that will make us better prepared for future and future disasters, and is very much the manner. and is very much the manner in which the town could reasonably use its OP funds. So I request that you support the project.
And I think we, as we discussed last time, EOC hasn't been upgraded in quite a while. And I think firstly for myself, I think this is a great start to get this done.
Other questions for Mr. Walsh?
I agree.
Thank you very much. Before we finish this evening, I just wonder, I apologize, but I have one more question on the school splits for the school department. Mr. Lee, would you mind? And Mr. Seemtav, this might be a question that you might better be able to answer. But I'm, I'm just wondering, where you said you had 20, was it, it was 20 rooms, right? And, and you have 12 units, so is there a, is there a discount to doing? Is the more we do, the less expensive it is, or is it pretty much $15,000 per?
No, it's, and that $15,000 is my, right now, it's an educated guess. This is in my field of knowledge. I mean, it won't happen in that number, obviously, this is going to have to go through public procurement laws. But to answer your question, yes, once the contractor is mobilized and on site, it's cheaper for them to keep going. For us, it is doing at peace now. So there is cost effectiveness.
Do you think it's possible, when you get your quotes, to get both quotes? To get a quote for 12 and a quote for 20, so we could, we could know what the, what the discount would be if we did more?
Yeah, it could, it could be bid that way.
Mr. Fantasy, do you see any problem?
No, unless there's money coming from another source, then we have to take it in town.
Okay, I'm just thinking of the board, I know there was some, some interest in possibly doing all these. It would be, probably be a positive thing for the board to know what the actual saving, cost savings would be if we did them all rather than just.
No, it could be, it could be bid that way with us in that alternate.
This is a classification on that process table. We haven't got out to get quotes, so if they were to avoid a number, we're not going to have a quote. And I like that sort of cost, not when it goes to bid. It's what it's asking, do we actually go through? And most likely, you can correct me about it, because there's a lot on my way out, my assumption is that this will have to be engineered.
Uh, no.
No, so we won't have to get it, we won't have that designer come in this time.
No, I can, I can work with the contractor, I can write specifications for it, so the cost saving here.
Well, we do have some, you know, we're not down to the last half a dollar here. So we do have some flexibility. So it might be that this is an item that we could just hold on a little bit longer until you have a better number, and then we can come back and put it on a subsequent agenda. If that was the case, but it just.
So I guess the question would be, would we actually try to go over?
More cool. Yeah. So we can stop, I can stop putting specifications in.
It just, just seems like if there is interest from, from the board on trying to do the whole project, it would make sense to find out what, what the difference is if there's a.
And we do have, we do have some, we wait to a timeline because this, the nature of this project has not allowed for occur of schools and stuff. So we wouldn't be able to do this until next summer. We wouldn't, if this was approved, we wouldn't move forward on this until. The goal would be to get that.
So maybe you could work on that, and it could be that by the time we have that number, we'll have a little better idea of where some of these other projects are, and we'll have a little better what, what money we have available as well. No, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Or anything else from the board on any of these projects? So my goal would be to be able to vote if the board is ready, and hopefully it would be, will be, at our next meeting, which is October, October 3rd. I'll have to talk to our two members that aren't here, make sure they have time to catch up on everything. But I think it, it makes sense to get these projects going and be able to talk to Plymouth County, get everything in a pipeline. They do take a while, and there are deadlines with, with OP. So that's what I'm, I'm hoping anyway. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything you'd like to add? Anybody else, any, any further comments from everybody?
No. So do you actually have to have quotes for moving forwards to submit these, or?
Depends on what is through the federal.
So when we make our decisions, we're going to have to know for each of these.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer those votes, those votes, that we don't have for bid until we have.
Which one do you want to put in there?
That's only Plymouth County, right?
Yes, the other one would be AR.
We've used up both of our.
I'm going to look at that again, kind of split it up. Which ones are from the county, which one got found yesterday?
Well, we'll have to get together so we can see what we can put on it. It makes no sense, I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Yeah, no, I know. Maybe a little aggressive to have it on the next meeting.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see.
We can't.
Yeah, I know we don't have a whole lot for that meeting, so I just thought that might be a good.
And we might put some on that.
That's what I was saying, the ones you're ready to move forward.
Kind of the easy yes.
Well, we'll see what we can do, if we, if we don't have time, then we'll, we'll move it to a later meeting. All right, thank you, let's see. Minutes licenses topics not recently anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. They're mine, select one or none.
I just want people to continue to remember.
Thank you, and I have no announcements as well. So our next meeting will be on October 3rd, and is there a motion, Roger?
I'm ready.
There's a motion in a second. Discussion, call it favor. I oppose engineers. Thank you, everybody, thank you very much.